Okay.
What was going on here? Somebody's birthday party?
Paul. Paul. Mike's so hot, be careful what you say.
Oh. Somebody's birthday party?
What?
Somebody's birthday party, what was that?
I don't know. I just told them.
Alright.
There's constant fires because they put them in the hallway of their apartment building. And I'm telling them about e-bikes. I worry about the batteries for the, uh, for the headsh, you know, the garden stuff too. The leaf blowers, wouldn't they catch fire just like the others? They took all their batteries back from the Hyundai plant and went back to South Korea. They took their marbles and went home. Let me go one more time. I can't right.
Wow. Tea.
Is that new to you?
Yeah. Wow. Feel like Caddyshack. Okay. Good, Sam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, this meeting was previously called to order in closed session. Um, I will restate the compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice this meeting was published in the official newspapers and prominently posted in Borough Hall and filed with the clerk in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. We'll do a pledge of allegiance. Councilman Kern?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Can we have a roll call, please, Laura?
Mayor Coth?
Here.
Carnaval?
Here.
Mr. Staff?
Here.
Mr. Tashian?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. Gallow?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Alright, before I invite up our first and only presenter to talk about e-bikes, I just wanted to make a public service announcement. We got a little crazy last meeting, so I brought in a bigger gavel. Don't make me use it, right? So I'd like to invite up Chief Ganzemmi and Officer Damato, who are just gonna give us a little talk on e-bike safety.
Thank you, Mayor.
Why are we watching this on? It's got a delay.
Yeah. I guess not. We need to sign into port. I put it up on my email.
I bought it from your email. Otherwise you would have to sign into Microsoft 365.
Alright, good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, I'm Officer Thomas Damato. Just gonna give a very brief presentation on e-bikes. Obviously, I'm sure you're all aware, e-bikes in our community are becoming more frequent. Drowning towns as well have been dealing with it. Myself, obviously, and all the patrol staff are out there. We see them driving around, um, and, you know, the laws were, you know, recently enacted and we're still, you know, learning what they are because they're difficult to find out while on patrol. So this is just a brief overview of what is out there regarding e-bikes and just some brief of what they are and different rules that are associated with each one. So obviously, you know, first we have the low-speed electric scooters. These are, you know, we like to compare them to Razor scooters. Obviously, they're not exactly the same. The design's the same, but these are electric. They have an electric motor. They're through, obviously, throttle power. You can kickstart them, and the max assisted speed is 19 miles an hour. Currently, there's no license registration required for operation of the scooters, and helmets are required for under 17 years old, as is regular bicycles. If you're over 17 years old, you know, it's still always recommended just for personal safety. God forbid something should happen. But if you're under 17 in New Jersey, they're required, which, you know, normally we see kids on them, so most kids are obviously under 17, so helmets are required. You are allowed to park these on the sidewalk, so obviously that little strip on Kindercomac by Shriver's, saw today on patrol, kids park their bikes and their scooters on the sidewalk. You're allowed to park your bicycles and scooters on the sidewalk as long as they're not blocking access for people walking on the sidewalk. Uh, so now we get into the meat of it. For the low-speed electric bicycles, which are e-bikes, there's two classes, which we'll get to on the next slide. But essentially, in the most basic terms, they're pedal and have an optional throttle. Power source is electric for the low-speed electric bicycles. On the max assisted speed is 20 miles an hour. License registration is not required for them. And most of, again, most of the time they're operated by children, but obviously adults can operate them as well. And again, you're allowed to park them on the sidewalk as long as they're not blocking any access for pedestrians. Now the classes. So there's two classes in New Jersey for e-bikes. The first class being Class 1. Motor assistance only occurs while pedaling stops assisting at 20 miles per hour. The most basic way I can explain it for people to understand is, for Class 1, the motor only assists while pedaling. So think of it as if you're going up a hill, someone's pushing you up a hill. That's essentially what the Class 1 is. The motor only assists when the person is pedaling, and the assisting stops once it reaches a speed of 20 miles per hour. Class 2 is a little different. Pedals are still on the bike as well, but the throttle, think of it as a motorcycle, can solely operate the bicycle. So it's almost as a kid version of a motorcycle, but the speed, again, cannot go over 20 miles per hour. But this one, the pedals, the person doesn't have to pedal. It can just be used as a throttle like a normal motorcycle, and the motor cuts out at 20 miles per hour, and it won't let the bike go over 20 miles an hour. Motorized bicycles. This is where, you know, it gets a little more tricky for us because while riding down, you know, on patrol, they all look exactly the same. The difference is that this power source can be gas, whereas the Class 1 and Class 2 are strictly electric. That's why they're called e-bikes. The max assisted speed for motorized bicycles is 28 miles per hour. With these, however, license registration is required, as well as a helmet. So in New Jersey, they classify these as mopeds. So if you have a 15-year-old that wants to operate one of these, they can. They just have to have a moped license and have it, have registration with the DMV and liability insurance, typically like a motor vehicle as well. These cannot be parked on the sidewalk, which is, again, hard to decipher because, like, I can go back, the pictures look exactly the same. The only option or difference is that these have a higher assisted speed, and they just go faster. That's as simple as I can put it. The difference between all of these is to have it classified as a bicycle in New Jersey, they have to have pedals. So what we're seeing in other towns, I mean, just talking to other guys that I'm on the job with, say that they're seeing these types of bicycles without pedals. That's a motorcycle, which kids can't operate unless they have, obviously, a motorcycle license and a full driver's license. In order for it to be considered an e-bike or a bicycle, it has to have pedals, and they have to be operational. So if you see one of the, or if we see one of these on the road and they don't have pedals, it's considered a motorcycle, and they can't have it without a motorcycle license. This is kind of our little cheat sheet that the Rutgers Traffic and Public Safety Administration put out. This is available online. Anyone can see it. Kind of just goes through what I just went through in the presentation of the different types and what's required of each. So obviously, you know, you can go through it at your leisure, but essentially it's that. Some additional rules that we're trying to, you know, educate children on and the general public is operators of e-bikes and e-scooters must ride in the same direction as traffic and obey all traffic lights, signs, and signals, as is with normal bicycles. I know sometimes we see them kind of blow through intersections, but per New Jersey motor vehicle law, everyone has to stop and ride in the same direction as vehicles and obey all the same signals. They're advised to wear helmets to minimize potential injury. Helmets are required for those under age 17. Obviously, they're advised for all ages, but they are required in New Jersey for anyone under the age of 17. They cannot block pedestrian traffic or wheelchair access for the ramps. They must have safety equipment in working order Friday night. This is especially important because, you know, obviously, the kids, when the weather's nice, they're gonna drive them all around. They have to have bells, front and rear reflectors. Lights are always good, too. And they're prohibited, prohibited, sorry, for tampering or modifying the bike to change its speed or power. Once it's designed to not go above 20 miles an hour, if you were to alter that and make the e-bike go an excessive amount of speed or a no-speed limit, that's prohibited, and there's fines associated with that as well. And, uh, that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Todd, does the, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Just a quick question.
Sure.
The, I think it was the third example you showed us. Registration and license require, does it get a plate, like a moped or a motorcycle?
So it gets a, so in a perfect world, all these bikes would have what they're rated, the class that they're rated marked on the bicycle, almost like a, I think of it like a boat registration, where they have the tail number or the boat number on the actual boat. They're supposed to have it, but they have to have registration. If this particular bike has to be registered, it has to have registration on the person, to any motor vehicle, and insurance. They, they're supposed to have a plate. A lot of them don't, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Ted?
Just a question in terms of the popularity. Have you or the department chief, Roger, or lieutenant as well, changed or decided to do some things a little different in those zones that are heavily trafficked with these kids that have those bikes? It's almost like the speed trap, obviously, the first warning, all those good things. Like, are, have, you kind of formalized some of that? You know, you can't disclose some of it, but...
Um, I mean, I could let Chief and obviously Sergeant Pressburger talk about that, but at least for, from a patrol standpoint, when, at least, you know, when I'm out there and I can speak for a lot of the guys, you know, we see them, and we, if we see kids not wearing helmets, we obviously stop them, say, "Hey, guys, you gotta have a helmet on." Do the whole, you know, song and dance, and usually they understand. They'll be like, "Okay, I'm sorry, I'll go get a helmet." It's really just a case-by-case basis. Most, sometimes the kids have helmets on to ride in perfectly, right down Kindercomac, no problems. It's, you know, the outliers that ride on the southbound and the northbound lanes, and that's where it kind of gets, obviously, unsafe, and that's where we try to, you know, intervene.
I know you were good enough to share your time this summer with the summer camp and the rec program. Is there more formalization within the school districts, St. Joe's, OPS? River Edge, obviously, is different. Are you doing any more formal programming for the school year?
So, yeah, yeah, so, you know, we, we're in the plan to do a presentation again with the schools. I would be more than happy to do it again, or as many times as needed for, in the schools. I think really just education at this point, because they're so new, especially for law enforcement, just to, you know, educate the public so they know what it is, what is required of them, and then just, you know, keep enforcing it, like anything else with motor vehicle law.
Yeah. I think one last thing I'll just offer, maybe in the spring, and obviously with the holidays and as the weather gets nicer, I mean, they're still gonna be riding their bikes, but maybe in the spring we should think about doing, like, an e-bike awareness and safety week. And the reason I say that is because I live on Prospect Avenue, and there are dirt bikes that are going down Prospect. So I think people have some confusion as to what's allowed or permissible by law, to your point about no pedals versus not, and that itself essentially is the motorcycle, and double people are riding it and all that good stuff, so...
And it's confusing because you don't know, they all look the same. As you, the pictures are super similar. They all look the same. It's just, you know...
No. I think it's great. It's a great program. We probably need to continue to because they're not going away, so...
Yeah, with that, we're working on ordinance right now.
Good.
Are they taking them to schools? Do you see them at Riverdale? Are they parking them in the parking lot? And are they allowed to do that? Do they need permission from the school to get a parking spot? Or, I'm assuming they're not taking them to the grammar school here, or no?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
No, they are.
I see them at the high school. Because they park them in the bike racks, because in New Jersey, they're classified under bicycles. Like, the whole, the whole e-bike is electronic bicycles. So they park them in bike, in the bike racks. They fit just like bicycles.
They're small enough to fit in the bike rack?
Yeah.
It's a bicycle with a motor on it.
So Officer Damato, I want to thank you actually for bringing this to the attention this summer and the school program. And I know we've chatted about it in public safety, and we've actually proposing, as Chief Ganzemmi mentioned, a resolution actually to tighten up the safety on this. One of the things that we also chatted about was changing the bikes, perhaps maybe customizing it. Either changing a chip, I'm not 100% certain what you can do to it, but you can actually take the registration or take the model, as you will check, let's say, what the speed rating is, but you can actually change it. How do we talk about and address that particular situation whereby you can modify it to make it go from 15 miles per hour to, let's say, 25 miles per hour, but yet when you check it and you pull the VIN or the serial number, I guess, that is in, and then you can see that it should be rated for this, but it's now going at that speed? How do we take care of that?
Well, that would just be more targeted investigation to see if they made any tweaks or adjustments or improvements to the e-bike to make it go that fast. So when they do, when the officers do stop them on the, on the roads, they do the inspections and see what they can find, any modifications, and basically just talking with the rider itself. We get a lot of information from them to see if, hey, I did modify the bike, and then that's where, you know, the officers are very good at telling them what's right, what's, what class you should have, helmets, registrations, insurance, therefore.
And we have issued summonses for some e-bikes this summer. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chief. Have a great day. Close the lid.
Turn these things off.
You turn the computer screen down?
It's a little distracting watching the delay. So they can censor us. Perfect. Look at that.
My IT skills.
Thank you.
About it.
Okay.
It worked.
There you go.
Next on the agenda is discussion items. St. Joseph's Carnival, I guess they're having that again. And what are they asking us, Laura?
Uh, I believe they're asking for assistance in, A, are they allowed to put up a banner and/or signage around town? And if so, they gave renderings of both, the same image, just obviously the dimensions would be different. It seems from their email that they're pretty open to St. Joseph's Carnival. Oh, it's still a delay. Plug it?
Mayor, I can...
My IT skills, I failed.
I can speak to the St. Joseph's.
Delay and then we'll get feedback.
Just don't plug it in.
There you go.
Okay, we're getting power.
Turn the volume off, Roger.
Just try to eliminate everything. Put it in the park shop. What? Just put it in the park shop. Sorry.
Thank you.
We'll still hear it.
That looks like a fire alarm, which doesn't, like, the smoke detector that won't go off.
They didn't ask for specific dates to put them up, so I think they're just looking for, can they put it up? What timeframe and where? We've never had a formal policy, generally, anything written in the past for organizations. So generally, when just somebody wants to do something like this, they, this is what they submit at this point, until something is formalized.
So Mayor, I can speak to this if you want to jump in. I did have a discussion with my neighbor who wrote that letter. It is their first attempt at rejuvenating the carnival over there, which I think some of the other towns and churches have, and they were just looking for some direction. My recommendation was the signs, or similar signs to, and I think they're summed up already, to the political signs, and I said anybody could put whatever they want on their own property. There are, there's a carnival, I believe, at St. Peter's in River Edge sometime in the near future. And I said the banner may be a heavy lift. I mentioned, you know, I don't believe that, as you mentioned, Laura, we don't have a policy, and there's, you know, we had a missing Oridal Arts Festival banner this summer from the tennis courts, so I said that may be a heavy lift. They don't really...
I know, we've actually never allowed a banner across the street.
Yeah, I said that, that may be a heavy lift, especially at this date and time, and maybe that's something the ordinance committee can address. They did, so they're fine with that. They did say, boy, it'd be great to have one of these signs, and it's not a big ask, but potentially in Hague Park or at the corner of Prospect, and...
Anybody opposed to having them put up signs?
Kindercomac Road. No, I think the signs, I mentioned borough property to personal property. Borough property is borough property or county property, so that's, that's really it.
Well, can we put it on the sign board for starters?
We could reach out to them, see if they could submit the image in whatever format we need.
Yeah, I think the digital board is good. I mentioned OPDV, so they're good with that. I mean, I think they... I mean, I think they needed, they weren't sure, this is their first rodeo, I guess, and.
Yeah, I think that if they want to do lawn signs on their front yard, that can sort of be treated like we do the signs.
Where residents can put it on.
Yeah, I think residents can, I think can put whatever you want on your yard. I think the ask, the ask potentially for this board, I think the banner is gone because we don't have a banner policy and it's too much right now. Again, potentially at the corner of Memorial at Prospect and Kinderkamak or potentially Hague Park, and I said, I don't know, that is borough property, you know, for a week or two, could they put a couple of signs there? That's what this, I think this governing body.
So something related, Tom, I learned of yesterday that we've discontinued a practice of advertising in parks, there's a green acres issue with advertising, and if we're not compliant, it could jeopardize our funding from the state.
I'm with you, yeah, I didn't.
Learning more about it, but that came up yesterday, Ted and I were made aware of that. But I think sign boards fine, they want to put it in their front yard, it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's really the borough property thing, I'd say, hey, listen, we don't have an ordinance, that's okay, also, I did mention the fact that when I see those signs for somebody's junk disposal company on borough property, I pick them up because they drive me bananas, so, because it's borough property, so, you know, yeah, I'll just, I'd say the lawn signs are good and, you know, next year they want something bigger, you know, they come back to us, right? I think they'll be fine with that.
Nice to see you return.
Is it okay with that?
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, it's October 3rd, 4th, 5th, so, yeah, everybody, they'd love everybody to go, I mentioned that we're having our great family day on the 5th, so they'll have to be in two places at once, I guess, maybe that day, or some of us.
Okay. Laura, that was it under discussion?
Yes.
Okay, next up is old business, anybody have any old business?
Just one quick thing, Mayor, I talked about it last time, last meeting, on September 17th, the chief will be hosting coffee with the chief at Adele Coffee between 8:45 and 10:45 AM.
Thank you.
Did I say that?
Nope. If there's no other old business, we'll go to new business?
So Mayor, I have an item, it relates to correspondence, the letter that we received from Mr. Brown regarding the downtown pavers. I think he's raised a very important issue that, and one that we need to address as a governing body. I don't have any recommendations or answers, but I just want to bring it to the attention of my colleagues that, you know, that work was done many, many years ago, and I'm sure with the right intention, but it is a challenge from a maintenance standpoint and one that we should be looking at as a governing body because it represents the beauty of our downtown, so, it's the only point I wanted to raise based upon that, that letter that we received.
Yeah, no, the, the letter, I inferred it was going to come because he had mentioned it to me, and it might have been the meeting that you were absent, we did talk about this. The council came to the consensus that the borough needs to maintain that streetscape. There was a question about whether a fall fell under the property owner, under our ordinance, or the borough, I think there's confusion between staff and business owners. The council concluded that it's our responsibility to maintain, obviously we're not in the business of picking litter up in front of people's things and they should still follow those property maintenance requirements, but as far as that brick band, the trees, other elements of the streetscape, if it falls into disrepair, we have to budget to address it. So I think the council's 100% behind that, and I've noticed a remarkable difference in addressing even the weed issue. We're not totally there, but we're getting there throughout the Kinderkamak corridor, so I think we're on the way, but as we come up with budget discussions, we're going to have to talk about perhaps budgeting, some kind of a rolling fund to deal with that in increments as we may want to resurrect the sidewalk program.
And Mayor, just to, you know, jump on that as well, this was in my report, but I might as well mention that the DPW really, you know, was discussing this as well, and we thought about, you know, as short-term solution, just to do the weed control and do sprays in, I guess you could say, off-peak hours and also have proper notification to the people of the town as well when we do those.
Yep. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor.
If there's no other new business, we'll move to public comment.
I have a couple of, couple of things, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
And I know it's not the regular meeting, maybe some of the folks from OP TV, I guess the channel got switched to 1300 or, if they can explain why and if there's any way we can put it now, it's, it was difficult enough to find and information is difficult to find about this town, and I certainly don't think it's a positive to, to moving the needle, get residents' information, so I don't know why that happened, but if there's any way we can. Good, that we can kind of protest and put us back to some channel that people can find. A couple other things, just real quick in terms of calendars, Thursday again is 9/11 at the ceremony at 6:00 PM, but at 8:00 PM, the Firehouse Theater, that again is free for residents 55 and older, the show is beautiful, it's dress rehearsal, it's an awesome show, and again, it's free for everybody, any of our residents, come over there, so I would highly recommend they take advantage of that. The other thing is, you know, the, I was around town on Saturday and there's a lot of great things going on preparing for 9/11 and the soccer and softball and even with schools opening, our roads are extremely busy now and extremely crowded and just, again, to really stress, you know, working on pushing the needle towards traffic calming and pedestrian safety that we're back, and it's starting to get dark, so whatever we can do to move that needle, I guess that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Kelly. So we'll move into public comment, each speaker shall have one turn, not exceed five minutes, please identify yourself at the microphone and remain courteous, entertain a motion to open for non-agenda items.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we're open.
Hi.
Hi, Nick.
Nick Bessink, 177 Country Club Drive Oradell. As far as Altice is concerned, in this channel switch, by law they were supposed to give a 60-day's notice, none of the peg stations have gotten notice about it whatsoever. We checked with a lot of different stations, we belong to JAG and JAG has over 60 peg stations around the state of New Jersey, so we sent out letters and find out if anybody got notified, nobody got notified. Plus, Altice has the right to do it, but they have to notify us when they do it. As I understand it, at least right now, mid-month, they will bring us back down to 77 because they did receive a lot of complaints. One of the things we've been asking for, for quite a while, is us to have an HD channel. I talked to the BPU about it and they said that they have to have all the municipalities that are involved send letters to the BPU and to Altice to complain, because if they were on a state contract, as I understand, they were supposed to supply us with an HD channel. It's harder for us to do standard definition now than it is prior because of the fact almost everybody is actually on HD at this point, we're actually having to downconvert to give Altice a signal that is compatible with standard definition broadcast. So in essence, it costs us more money to downconvert, they're not doing the downconverting, we are. Otherwise, they won't broadcast our channel. One other thing you might want to look into is the fact that for the past six months, Riverdale has not been broadcasting anything, as a matter of fact, that they don't even have an error message, and when I spoke to them, they didn't care about their channel on Altice or Verizon anymore, they're going just to YouTube. Well, that's fine, if that's the case, I request that we take the channel back and we can put a bulletin board up solely on that channel and then include a lot more information. Since they're not using it, I can't see the reason why they would have it anymore. They claim they don't want to use it anymore, so what's the point? Yeah, but as I said, with Altice at this point, it seems, and this is only, one of the peg stations did, he had a reply finally from Altice, and that mid-September, they will at least bring us back to 77, but for how, what time period is, we don't know. So they may bump us back up to 1300 again. Actually, 1300 to 1317 were supposed to be HD allocations, though they're not giving anybody HD. The only one that has HD by way of Altice is Oakland, and from what I gathered with one of the former chiefs down in Altice, they told me that they were sorry they gave Oakland an HD channel, why, they didn't explain. But we should be getting an HD, it's becoming more and more of a problem trying to get an SD signal, because everybody has basically switched over to HD at this point. We've been HD by way of Verizon for the past three, four years now, and all of our equipment is HD as well, so. If you can write a letter to the BPU and Altice, it would be really advantageous for us all, thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Mayor, if I could just add onto my previous comment about the theater on Thursday night, if you recall, the last time they took the summer break, the traffic crossing Kinderkamak Road, I was sitting there and it was extremely dangerous, and I know in the past years we've had an officer or some type of safety patrol there for 30 minutes or 40 minutes between, say, 7:30 and 8:15. If we can arrange that, if someone can, I think we discussed that then, I don't know if it's necessarily after the show, I assume traffic is calmer at 10:30, but we will get a good crowd of people, and again, the, the, many of them are, if not all, are seniors trying to cross that road and that's extremely busy, especially with sunset and sundown there.
Okay, I'll ask councilman's staff to follow up with the chief.
Can you guys look into that? That'd be great, Thursday night, yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
David Banfield, I have two items, one is a question, in terms of keeping storm drains clear, is that a homeowner's responsibility if it's in front of their home, or is that a DPW responsibility?
So typically, we don't do questions, they're in comments, I will, I will answer very briefly, it's a good thing for you to do, but it's not a requirement for you to do.
That's what I thought, and thank you for bending the rule.
Yep.
The other thing is, I don't know if you're aware of the opportunity presented through Resilient New Jersey, I only saw the email recently and so I'm bringing it to your attention at this meeting now, but there's funding for regional planning for, for wastewater utilities, up to $300,000 if you have a utility with two other towns and a one community organization. I have the information here, I suggest you take a look at it, timeframe is short, but I thought at least you should be aware of the, of the opportunity. So that's it, I'll just pass this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing, Paul? I don't want you to miss it this time.
Okay, good evening, everyone, I hope you had a nice summer. I'm still wondering about the bus trip that we would like to have for seniors, and I hope it's not a lack of interest on the part of the council, but my, my opinion is that when I said last time that perhaps somebody's lazy, I think it's low energy, and maybe that's one of the reasons why we also don't have our farmer's market anymore. But I, I sent in an open request to the county, and here's the request, the answer that I got. Says, "Oradell Senior Building Grant of 2005, any restrictions to using, to renting use, Paul Latzounis. This letter responds to your request for information to the County of Bergen dated and received in our office on 8/14/2025. Description of records requested. General County Administrator Other. Grant terms of the Oradell Senior Building 2005 as the limitation to any renting out for raising funds for senior activities. Due to the passage of some 20 years, the Town of Oradell could not find any record of the grant. The county has reviewed its files and has determined that there are no responsive documents to your request. Sincerely, Christina DiIolea." So I think we could still do it. Now, on another topic, I want to know why, why in our master plan, we have a 15-foot buffer zone between commercial and residential building lots, but yet we did not make an ordinance? We did not follow the plan of the master plan to have an ordinance? And is it that we're going to favor commercial properties over residential properties? Also, I, I believe we should not have any underground or underbuilding parking to serve and, and help commercial, commercial properties make large buildings. I want to limit the size of large buildings, and we can do that, because they use these underground prop, parking air facilities in order to use more land so that they could have more apartments. Now, on another note, the planting of trees, I went to the Rutgers, I think they had it at the senior center, Jean Epifino, and she said, I asked her, I says, "When is the right time to plant trees?" And she says, "Well," she says, "the right time is usually October and November and in the spring." And she told us that at the senior center, because I asked her that question outright. Now, I just wanted to let you know that in this, in front of the, in the B, the new B1 zone, in front of a Century Real Estate Place, there's a place where a tree's supposed to be, it's missing, and also in front of the liquor store in the B1 zone, the tree is missing. I'd like to know if the council has addressed the B1 zone 25 mile per hour speed limit that I proposed, and a push-button red light, crocodiles, and a study on no left turns. And I will talk to you, I think I cannot read what I have, something else here, but I will bring it to you next time. And it's something about buildings and building housing on contaminated land, and that should not be happening. Even, and there's some legislation that has been put into the legislature about it, but it hasn't been passed, it was put in in February 2025, and hopefully that somebody will bring it up again, and that's all I have to report right now, because I'm running out of time, and I'll speak to you on the other stuff.
Thank you, Paul.
Sam Tripp, 327 Maple Avenue. This is a comment for, for public safety and quality of life, which I believe is under public safety. On Maple Avenue, we've had a problem for years, I've been there 36 years, with speeders and commercial vehicles cutting through to avoid Kinderkamak Road, and it's a north and south, you know, they come from Oradell Avenue, they make the left-hand turn to go south, and they turn down Ridgewood Road. And they turn down Ridgewood Road. And, you know, either they're going straight on Ridgewood or make a left. And that's really to avoid the traffic devices. So, and then going north, it's the same thing. It's they're coming up, either coming from Ridgewood Road or Oradell Avenue. I'm sorry about that. I can't shut my phone off. Anyway, so one of the remedies was, a few years ago, is to put a four-way stop sign in to slow people down. It did. But there are people who don't, who don't come to a full stop. So by the time they get to the stop sign, they zoom in, they're already getting up to 50 miles an hour by the time they get to my house. So the big problem is the, is the commercial vehicles that don't deliver to Maple. Like, it's acceptable to have FedEx and UPS and the post office and Amazon. Those are all services, and the garbage sanitation. That's all providing services to the neighborhood. But when you see, when you see dump trucks come in full load, you know they're destroying the road that we just resurfaced. You know, after 17 years, they put a new pavement down, and now you're going to watch it deteriorate because of the heavy equipment. So I see that every day, because I'm home. You know, I'm retired now. And I hear, I hear the vehicles coming. And I look out the window, and I'm like, oh, boy, another big truck. And one time, you know, three in the road came, which is usually from, I don't know what company. It's one of the big landscaping companies that were cutting through every day, twice a day. So a couple of us were outside. We were like, hey, no trucks, we yelled at them. And they were like, no signs. So I'm thinking, if that's what they're looking at, if that's what it's going to take to stop that kind of traffic, can we put possibly on the north side and the south side, say, no trucks except for delivery? If it's legal, local delivery? And I mean local, as in on the block, because you do get delivery trucks for other parts of the town. So I just want to bring this up. It's a follow-up. And really, it's a nuisance. You know, it affects your quality of life. Especially, I didn't realize it till I was home every day, how bad it is, you know? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Seeing no other public for non-agenda items, entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion. Well, before we get to the consent agenda, Laura, are we, what are we doing here with late resolutions?
Coming out of close, we're just adding. Sorry. Coming out of close, we're adding two resolutions onto consent. Both are for purchases for the police department. One is to using federal seizure funds. We are replacing all service weapons issued to the members of the Oradell Police Department to a vendor Eagle Point guns in West Euphor, New Jersey for an amount not to exceed $45,000. That would be Resolution 25206. Resolution 25207 would be to use the usage of the federal seizure funds to purchase, equip, and outfit officers for two police motorcycles to create a motor unit. This would be for the vendor, Bring County Harley Davidson, in an amount not to exceed $60,000. And that would be 25207. So I would just need a motion and a second to add that to the consent. And then you would vote in totality for.
Still moved. Do we have a second to add them to the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kernival?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tashian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. So just recapping, before I open it for the consent agenda, we have the addition of Resolution 25206 using seizure funds to replace firearms for the police department. And 25207, again, using seizure funds to acquire two motorcycles for use by the police department. Entertain a motion to open the public comment on consent agenda items only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we're now open.
Paul Letzounis, 25195. This is something that's for flood damage. And I want to know what areas it applied to.
This is for the entire borough. This is a state mandate that we need to follow. And so we're using Neglia as a subject matter expert to help us prepare the ordinance so that we will be in compliance with the state requirement.
So they charge us, they charge us that amount of money just to prepare the ordinance?
Well, there's some support, and I believe some mapping that has to be analyzed in order to do that. And this is also a requirement of our JIF, right, Bill?
Yes, it is. Particularly with all the flooding litigation and what have you in the last couple of years.
Okay, I just, I thought maybe it was only for the, preparing the ordinance. So it's not really just that.
There's a lot of detail in the ordinance, though.
It's a very technical.
Engineering-type of stuff, beyond my bandwidth.
Okay. 25196. I don't know what GIS is. When they write these ordinances, I mean, these resolutions, and you put GIS there, the common person is never going to know what.
Geographic Information System.
Geographic?
Information System.
Information? Okay. And on that, what is the account? The accounts, what are those accounts? The two accounts? There's two accounts. There's C0425 something, and another one, 51005 something.
You have any answers?
I don't see. I mean, it's capital funding, Paul. It's a requirement by the NJDEP that we have to map all of our stormwater outfalls. So basically, the entire stormwater system for the borough has to be memorialized on a map and filed with the DEP so that we make sure that stormwater is going to the right place. We don't have combined sewer storm overflows or any of that thing.
Is there any changes from previous? I mean, are we changing them?
I don't think we've ever done it before.
Pardon me?
I don't think it's ever been done before.
Oh, it's never been done before. Something new, okay. 25197, irrigation of Hoffman Field. What, is there a problem there that we need to irrigate it? And also, is this going to include the water filling station that we've tried to require for each ballpark that we have? Is that part of it?
Totally separate from the water filling station. This is a, we've received a grant from the state to upgrade the irrigation system at Hoffman Field. So this is for Neglia to prepare the bid documents to be able to go out and hire a vendor to upgrade the system to the latest technology. This is funded through a grant.
Okay. I just, I think that since you're doing something like that, it might be economically better to actually put the water filling station in there too, since they're going to be working on the water system.
Grant doesn't cover it. This is an irrigation system. That's potable water.
I think we were going to have a grant for Hoffman Field, and that we were going to change things. Is this part of the grant?
Not to my knowledge, but that doesn't mean that we can't look at putting a water filling station there.
Yeah, because there was one there 40 years ago, 45 years ago. And we never got it back. And everything is there underground. It's right, there's a place there by the Hoffman Memorial. There's a concrete area with the folding doors that you can go down into the ground where the plumbing is. Attach it from there. So I would hope that we address this so that we can get this next filling station in.
DPW.
Because the other filling station is, we said we're going to do in Grant Field when we do the irrigation system there. That's what was stated at the previous meetings, for Grant Field. So I assume that we're going to do it now that we're going to do this irrigation here. But since it's separate, then, you know, maybe we can just put it in ourselves while we're doing it. I don't know. The other thing is 25201. I have no idea what a dragger something Alcoost is, 1710 and 9510. What is that?
The Alco test machine? Is that what you're asking? 25201?
Yeah, yeah. What is it?
That's the machine that measures the content of alcohol in your breath when you're suspected of a DUI.
Oh, so we didn't have any of those before?
We have. It needs to be replaced over time.
Oh, we have to replace them?
Yes.
It's actually also being paid the funds.
So they're not working, they're not working properly? Is that why we replaced?
It's working, but they have to be upgraded from time to time. And this is another item that's being paid for through the use of seizure funds at no cost to the borough.
Okay, we can't save any money there. All right, the last one here now, that you just said now, 25207. I know that you're going to get the money from these funds that were taken away from people and stuff. And we have accumulated some money, and we can use it. But getting motorcycles and putting our police officers on motorcycles, I don't think that's a good idea, because with the traffic and stuff that goes on, I think we may get our policemen hurt with the motorcycles. So I don't know how you guys are going to talk about it, but, you know.
We actually have, we actually have police officers that already have motorcycle licenses.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know. But I see a lot of motorcycle accidents. And I remember when I was younger, too, where they had these type of things. And there were all kinds of problems. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Laura, can we read the correspondence into the record, please?
Yes. Number one is a thank you letter from Bergen Catholic regarding the Oradell Police Department's recent assistance in defusing Brother John Gennaro Solo. Number two is a letter from Ron Brown, property owner, regarding downtown streetscape issues. And number three is a public notice from Bergen County regarding the annual Open Space Trust Fund applications for all Bergen County municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda.
Mayor, if I may, on the correspondence, the Bergen County Open Space, from reading that, did the county, it looks like they have the plan to allocate their funds, and that's kind of the formal meeting to grant that?
They have a public hearing before it goes to the commissioners for final approval.
But it looks, yeah. So if I'm reading correctly, Oradell, we potentially are going to be in line for $80,000 for a memorial field to upgrade the asphalt and et cetera, et cetera, right? Do you copy that? And?
That is accurate.
And then, I'm assuming it's our Water Works, $750,000 from the Division of Historical and Cultural Affairs for the Water Works additional roof work? Is that correct?
That has nothing to do with us.
It's not our Water Works.
It's County's Division of Historic and Cultural Affairs to undertake repairs to the building.
To our, to this building here, yeah.
Not our building.
Or, well, the one close by.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So they're, so they continue to put money into that, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, well, they're going to get a new roof over there. Okay. All right, yeah, thank you. And this 80,000 could kind of, obviously, it'll help out the grant that we're getting for Memorial. That's in addition to that, right? That's from the Open Space, and that's, that's good news.
Every bit helps.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to pull a resolution for separate discussion or vote, or have any question on any resolution on the agenda?
Mayor, I have, I'm assuming, yeah. The, does the underground storage tank, we have to take that out again? What was that, leaking over there? The DPW, is that what we talked about?
It reached the end of its useful life expectancy. It needs to be removed. We're under order from the state to remove it.
And are we putting in another one? Or no?
No.
We have alternatives.
A different way to get it out of there, right? Okay.
We're not going to put an underground tank back in with the flooding that's a problematic issue.
Okay, and in terms of that, was that in our cap? Or was that budgeted, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
We talked about that.
Okay. The other item, I guess, came up a couple of months ago, but 25198, in terms of the new hire, it looks like a wonderful, if-passed addition and a great resume, et cetera. You know, I just have pause at this point, just mainly that we do have a dynamic duo right now, and they're knocking it out of the park in terms of websites and programs and, you know, the concerts and et cetera, et cetera. So I, my thought is maybe to give it a year or so, but, because they're, you know, really moving us into the 20th century. And other items, capacity and budgets, et cetera. So that's it. That's why I have to, I continue to think that way. And that's all. But yeah, I look forward, if-passed. Certainly working together with the rest of the team here.
Okay. Anyone else have any items?
Nope.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for Resolutions 25-190 through 25-207.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kernival?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tashian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Council President, we have ordinances tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. We are introducing two ordinances tonight. So Ordinance 25-8 is ready for first reading.
Will the Borough Clerk read Ordinance Number 25-8 by title only?
An ordinance of the Borough of Oradell amending the borough's code specifically, Chapter 115-22 miscellaneous office fees. I believe this pertains to return check fees applicable to our digital payments for Echex and ACH payments specifically.
Yeah, covers it. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that Ordinance Number 25-8 be passed on first reading and published in the Monday, September 15, 2025 edition of the Bergen Record.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kernival?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Tashian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Steve, before you do, Bill, can I just take a quick question? The governor recently passed legislation that does not require us to print. Is it an e-listing now versus actually printing in the paper?
So, do you want to?
No, go ahead.
So the law passed, but they have not, in essence, delivered the, sort of the administrative code end of it, which gives all the particulars on how it's going to be phased in. I believe in March, we're expecting something by March of next year. The State Clerks Association and the County Association is hawk-eyed on this as far as when they come out. You'll be the first to know, and we'll hopefully be able to save some money. But this typically happens with legislation that they passed the law, but they haven't kind of made the rules and regulations on how to put it into effect.
Right, the details get kind of put in the administrative code as to actually how to implement it.
Okay, I just didn't know if it had been affected.
Not yet. Not yet.
Just nice to hear the clerks association's on it because sometimes the people that aren't in the trenches, so to speak, don't appreciate the nuances.
Well, the president for next year will be really on it, so, because that's, so you'll be the first to hear.
All right. Of course.
I'd like to make a motion that, I mean, sorry, Mayor, Ordinance Number 25-9 is ready for first reading?
Will the borough clerk read Ordinance Number 25-9 by title only?
An ordinance to the borough of Oradell amending the borough's code specifically Chapter 115 and fees, and this is a revision to the construction department fees. I think the entire chapter was reworked.
Any more explanation required, or? That sums it up nicely. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that Ordinance Number 25-9 be passed on first reading and published in the Monday, September 15, 2025 edition of the Bergen Record.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carnaval?
Yes.
Mr. Staff?
Yes.
Mr. Tashian?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And that is all we have for ordinance. Mayor? Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, Rogers' favorite item. You want to do the honors?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read the motion quickly.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I just, it's upstairs. I just wrapped up these...